Congratulations, Jordan.
Oh, I have to.
I'm able to still see you around.
Oh, yeah.
With the college and we'll be teaching our new people.
Oh, yes. Looking forward to that.
And while we're doing the floor thing, because when we hire people new, everybody has to stand up and give a ten to fifteen minute speech about yourself.
I just can't.
You got a fifteen minute speech?
I ain't gonna talk fifteen minutes. I'm gonna say it's my time at the city. I've been thirty great years, twenty eight, twenty eight years, eleven years, or twenty eight years, eleven months, and it's been nonstop fun, except for a little bit. I enjoy it every day. Thank y'all for hiring me, and I'm looking forward to it.
While they're coming forward, I'd like to say one thing. Now, you've heard a couple of numbers about twenty eight and a half years or thirty years. He has a full thirty years vested in the state retirement system. But he got to retire early because of his dedication to his job and to his service, and because he didn't take off his sick time, and so that builds up, and that just shows you the dedication of our employees. And I want to thank the family for putting up with all of us.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. It's always pleasant and heartwarming, and quite frankly, a relief when our public safety officers are able to end a career in this way, happy, joyful, all in one piece, and enjoy the retirement. It's quite, quite, quite an honor to have that, have that happen. Thank, thank y'all. Our next item for business, there'll be a presentation of the Central Business District Parking Study and Strategy by Jim Corbett. He's the Director of Municipal Planning Services for Walker Consultants, which is not me.
All right. Good evening, Council. Pleasure to see some familiar faces again from our stakeholder meetings that we've had over the past couple of months. As the agenda says, I'm going to give you a brief overview of our findings and recommendations for this strategic parking plan initiative here. Let's see if we can advance the screen. So we're going to start with a brief project overview, especially for those in the audience to get an understanding of the detail that we went through with this opportunity. Phase one of a three-phase process was, as all sort of analysis go, it's taking a look at the existing conditions, analyzing what is actually physically, from an infrastructure standpoint, in Ashboro. And so we look at things like the supply and demand, of course. Is there enough inventory available? Is the inventory located in the right locations for Ashboro? We reviewed several of the policies that are in place, and of course, as I mentioned, we had an initial stakeholder meeting in November, if you follow along the timeline down at the bottom of the screen there. And then after that, we did issue a community survey, but many of you do remember that. It was about a six-week runtime there. It's sort of conflicted a little bit with the Thanksgiving holiday into early December, so we kept it open a little longer, just so we could get as many responses as possible from the public, to sort of make sure we were headed in the right direction. And then it was based on that, it was just incorporating those findings into the body of our deliverables here. So that was, that was phase one, and it took us all the way through early January to wrap that up, after starting in sort of late October there. I remember the site visit sort of conflicted with some of the home football games. We were trying to be here on a Friday to get a good look at what a weekend or a weekday activity looked like, and we thought, well, football games sort of off the radar in that sense. So we wanted to get a more traditional look at what was going on in Ashboro. Phase two and three are on this particular slide here. Phase two, when we worked with the team, was to determine sort of what a reasonable growth would look like for Ashboro, population-wise. In other words, we got the baseline metrics down, now we wanted to sort of take a look at what that growth would look like over a five-year window. Took a very conservative approach with a slightly less than one percent sort of organic growth per year for this particular part of North Carolina. And then we compounded that for five years and determined what the growth metrics would look like on that. So you can see that in the detail of the report there. And then phase three was really where we brought it all together. This was, you know, we've got enough of the information to make some strong recommendations, give some options for the city to consider, as you can sort of see the bullet points on the screen there. And so we did wrap that up. Couple of weeks ago, we had our follow-up stakeholder meeting. We had a pretty good turnout for that, with some good feedback, to make sure that what we were recommending and proposing was acceptable by community standards and folks in the City of Ashboro's system. And so here we are at the final piece here, giving the final summary of the presentation. I'll touch briefly, I know we don't have a lot of time here. This is, and I apologize for those in the back of the room, you may not be able to see the small font on the screens in front of you here, but there's about eleven items on this screen that we did rank according to cost involved for the city to evaluate and consider. And then we also put a sort of a timeline of sort of what's the easy things to accomplish. Initially, what would be more of a sort of a midterm timeframe of about six to twelve months to consider, and anything after a year-plus would be more of a long-term consideration for the city to evaluate. So, as in with many of the cities and towns that we go in, there's some, there's some easy things that we like to say really are just more modernizing things. In the case of the ordinances, the number one item up there was very much a short-term, was just taking a look at how we can bring the ordinances into more modern effect that would benefit all the changes that have occurred in Ashboro, since some of these ordinances were proposed and approved at that point. One of the big questions really came, consideration was, you know, how do we determine where short-term parking access should be versus where longer-term parking access should be? And I think when we look at the community here, and those that visit Ashboro, those that live here in Ashboro, there's two types. One that simply need that short-term access to business to conduct that short-term visit, whether it's lunch or whether it's retail. And then there are those that want to spend the day in Ashboro, or those that work in Ashboro that effectively need a six or an eight-hour timeframe for their daytime job. So it not only considers the visitors and residents, but those employees that work in downtown Ashboro. So I think what you'll see in the report, I know what you'll see in the report, is our attempt to sort of lay out a map of where those short-term needs should be and long-term needs should be. The next item on there speaks to, I believe right now you currently have a five-dollar citation for someone that overstays or violates your parking ordinances on the book. When we take a look at best practices amongst some of the other peer cities and communities, we find that the five-dollar rate's a little on the low end. Our recommendation was to sort of realign that with, or reevaluate it, let's call it, so that it becomes more in line. Now, we're not looking to create a punitive environment here in Ashboro. What we're asking for those that are repeat offenders, that simply have no respect for ordinances and regulations in place, to sort of understand that, you know, it is important to comply with on the books. So I know we had a lot of discussion in the stakeholder meetings about that, and it's not necessarily designed to be a revenue generator for the city. And so the initial perception might be, well, you're increasing the fee, certainly that's going to be more fine and revenue, but that's not the effect. It sort of lets the folks or the visitors and residents know that, you know, we are trying to put a regulation in place that encourages people to comply. And I think we're all good, we will all comply, just sometimes we don't necessarily know what the regulations are. But I think this would help that. And I think initially, if you took this increased fine, you would see a short spike, but it would certainly level out over time, and folks would understand that this is the way, this is the recommendation for Ashboro. So it's really, it's designed to create that turnover, and put the longer-term parkers and sort of the longer-term destinations and the short-term people to have access to businesses. I think I've said enough on that. Enforcement, we met with Chief Brown and his staff as part of our initial stakeholder meeting, and we certainly have come to learn from the stakeholder feedback that enforcement should be something that's more consistent. It kind of dovetails that conversation on the, I think I skipped over one here, I just realized that, but I'll get back to that one. When, when the enforcement program is consistent, whether it's Chief Brown and his staff doing it, or folks from the Community Development Office doing that, there is a dedicated team that's in place enforcing those regulations. When it's consistent, we respect it, right? When it's inconsistent, that's where we sort of waver. We don't know what we should be doing. Is it enforced on Tuesdays only, or is it Fridays only? But I think when it's a more consistent plan in place, the respect level there is certainly in place. I'll go back to that shared parking opportunity, number five on the list there. As a planner, I've always recommended, let's take advantage of the resources that we already have without spending money to build infrastructure. So what this really means, when you talk about shared parking, it's partnering with some of the local businesses, perhaps, that have need for their parking inventory during business hours, but on off-hours, or Saturdays, when that business isn't necessarily open for business, that there be a partnership between that, that business owner and the city to use that as available public parking inventory. I realize that's easier said than done, right? Because I think there's a lot of, as a private or a personal business owner, you know, you may have certain needs beyond wanting the public to access your property outside of the needs of your business. But what we recommend here is that the city continue having those conversations with the business owners to see and explore those opportunities. Some may certainly say, no, we're never going to do it, but others may say, well, you know, that kind of makes sense for us. And what, what does sort of a relationship or an agreement look like between the small business owner, the private business owner, and the city for long-term? There were two more, excuse me, on the list there that talk about sort of midterm within that first twelve months, and that was enhancing upon your signage, branding, and wayfinding packages that you have in place. You have that very decorative-looking Ashboro logo that certainly stands out. Our, our add to that is to make the sign more simple, because I think on some of your signs, you try to communicate a lot of information. There's signs with interstates this way, there's signs with all-day parking, there's signs with county courthouse, you know, there's a lot to take in. Simplifying those signs for the motorists. The motorists, all they really want to do is find available parking. And of course, once I get out of my car, there is pedestrian wayfinding that would then tell me where the courthouse is, or where the retail is, or whichever destination we're trying to identify. But again, having that more consistent brand out there that's certainly identifiable, there's no mistake that this is a City of Ashboro-sponsored, controlled, managed parking asset here, will certainly go a long way for first-time visitors to Ashboro, as well as repeat visitors, maybe that don't come downtown every day. The pedestrian safety measure was one that came up sort of repeatedly as folks navigate your main vehicular corridors in town. You have certain mid-block crosswalks that I think are very well utilized, not just by business owners, employees, but visitors as well. Having these sort of mid-block crosswalks enhanced for safety measure will certainly go a long way towards sort of that welcome feel and safety in Ashboro. Other crosswalks are certainly signalized intersections, there's not much of an issue with those, but I think it's where we have these sort of pedestrian crossings that aren't traditional at an intersection that that would help. And we go into a little bit of detail in the report on some of the options available there. The last three on the list are really more, once you get a baseline program in place, if you so choose to adopt or make any of these changes, these are sort of taking your system, I guess, almost to the, to the next level, if you will. Technology in the parking industry has been a big thing as of the last probably five to ten years. There are a lot of things that you can do with technology to let motorists and pedestrians know where available parking inventory is. So, one of the things we talk about in the report is sort of a space availability. In other words, if you were to pull into any one of the city-controlled lots, you don't necessarily know the lot's full, because you can't see the back of the lot, but if you're informed upon arrival that the lot is full with a direction to additional parking somewhere else nearby, it can certainly help the motorists, or the consumer, or the visitor, or the resident identify where those options are. You see a lot of sort of the younger generation doing a lot more on mobile phones these days as far as wayfinding and guidance, and so we talk a little bit about incorporating the technology piece, so. And I realize that not all technology is sort of a one-size-shoe-fits-all, so I caution that. But I think that as, again, as Ashboro's parking, transportation, mobility system matures, I think that eventually those are going to be options to consider. And of course, we've got those identified as, as long-term. If we truly are talking, number ten, if we're talking about sort of remote parking for all-day patrons, residents, visitors of Ashboro, that may be parking a little further down on some of the corridors, like the tiered surface lot that's a little further from the core areas. We talk a little bit about a connector or a circulator service, something that would run on peak hours, peak days, that would sort of alleviate that anxiety from folks parking in your system. Some say it's too far to walk, it's too hot, it's going to rain, and those sort of solutions will help sort of reallocate your parking demand to using all of your assets, as opposed to everybody wanting to park in the prime location there. And then the last one on there, I think it really goes without saying, is really, you know, you should always be looking at your future parking inventory options there. As, as development continues to occur in Ashboro, I don't think any of us know exactly what that's going to look like today, but I know that we're open to that. I think you have to make some consideration towards, if parking inventory goes away as a result of development, where can that parking inventory be replaced, or how is it replaced? And so that can take on many forms. I know one of the, the old newspaper site, I think, was identified as a potential interim solution, and so there, there are options out there. And I know there probably are some that say, well, if we just built a nice three-hundred space parking deck right in the center of downtown, that would solve everybody's problem. Wouldn't be, it'd be a walking problem, it would be, I said that backwards. Yes, yeah, right, right, right. And so that, that immediately is the next question that comes up. I mean, structured parking is not cheap these days. I think we just had an annual report come out on structured pricing, and it's anywhere from a utilitarian structure. We're not talking about any sort of decorative wrought iron, or fancy red brick, or anything like that, but the base structure probably is going to run you about fifteen to eighteen thousand a space. So, that's, that's a lot of money, again. But, you know, those are, those are options. So, I, I think, I think what I've, what I've recognized in Ashboro is, I think it's, I've witnessed in the probably eight or so months that we've been here, just sort of a very organic-style growth here. And I think that that will probably continue, unless, and of course, there are major developments that come into downtown that sort of change that landscape. And I know that's obviously something for you all to consider when those options come up. So, I think that's it. I don't know if I've extended my time, timeframe here, but if there are any questions or interaction, I'd be happy to address.
Well, I think one, one component that's on everybody's thought process, the distance involved in a good parking space I'll accept in Charlotte and Raleigh is way greater than what I'm looking for in Ashboro. And it's nothing but a mindset. You know, if I can find something in thirty-four blocks, go downtown, but, you know, if I want to walk from the cooter up to Sunset, you know, and, and, and nor do I necessarily, it's just what you used to. So that's an awareness thing, but it will, been many conversations about a trial or something like, especially during certain hours. I like the way you've broke it down into different limits. Is there any questions for Mr. Corbett that Council has?
Not a question, but I'll just make a comment just throughout the process and the meetings that, that I've been involved with and been able to go to. Education has been an important thing that we've talked about, so if we're going to increase the, you know, parking fine, there would be a grace period, and just educating people about all these different elements if we are able to do some shared opportunities. So education will be a big part of this.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Well, at five dollars a day, you know, for a hundred dollars a month, I'm parked from Bob's office and just be, go downtown. That, that is a little ridiculously cheap, you know, that, a big number's a big number, but that's a ridiculously small number. We, we will need to take a, a look at that, just for general management, as you said. Anyone else? Mr. Corbett, I thank you very much for, for this outline and this overview. Lots for us to work on, and some low-hanging fruit, and then some expensive high fruit. We'll see if we can put all this together.
One bite at a time, that's right. Very good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item up, showing on the screen is item five, that was to be presented by our Downtown Development Manager, Addie Quarter. She's a pest under the weather this evening, and will not be joining us, so we will postpone item five until a later meeting. Moving on to our item six, this is the appointed time and place to offer the podium to the general public. We do ask if you come up to speak, we have a sign-in sheet, please print your name legibly so that we can get it correct into the minutes, not guessing it spelling, you know. If there's anyone that would like to address Council on any matter of general concern, that would be the time. Well, light duty tonight, hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Council, if you will, please refer to item seven, N. We've been requested to remove that from the consent agenda at this present time. It's not expected that any additional plans or policies related to any potential CDBG funding for the project are required to be adopted, so there will be no business to conduct on that. So, you'll be voting on everything except seven. Does anyone have any item they would like to remove for further discussion, or I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda?
Yes, I have item Q.
Q.
I'm still opposed to moving the light stoplight from Elm and Worth Street intersection. So, I mean, I don't, I don't want that.
Well, let me ask Council, would we pull that from the consent, and then say that is an agenda item to vote on?
That would be correct, just pull it from the agenda.
Okay.
Vote on all the others, and then I have a separate vote on that.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item N, which we defer, and retain item Q for further discussion.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Ms. Heath, and on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we've got that out there, let's see if we thumb through down here and find this, item Q. It was in here earlier, already. Oh, no, we don't want it.
It's at the very back.
It's after the P's. It's after the P's.
Where'd you find it?
After the, after the P's.
After Schedule P. After Schedule P, ah, okay. All right. Okay. All right, that gets us to that.
Thank you, Charles.
I will now open an agenda item seven, Q, ordinance designating certain intersections as a four-way stop intersection. We will now, I'll open that for discussion of, is that something we want to entertain doing, or returning to these stoplights, I suppose is the alternative.
I guess to get it started, Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt the ordinance designated the four-way stop intersections. We adopt that by reference.
This is for South Elm and Worth Street intersection. That's what we're talking about here. And I feel that intersection is too busy with vehicular traffic and pedestrians not to have stoplights. It's adding risk to people using that intersection, that's why I implore leaving the stoplights at that intersection.
Specifically, which intersection?
South Elm and Worth Street.
It'd be section two.
Section two, I'm seeing section two.
Q deals with all three, right?
What we have in front of us, what we have right now is a motion for all three to be four-way stops. Now, need to act on that motion, amend the motion, or, I guess we...
At this point, you're waiting for a second.
We've had, had discussions, is there any...
You have a motion for adoption?
We need to have a second, or thereof, at this time. Do we have a second for the motion?
Second, I'll say.
Mr. Burks, we have a motion and a second. Now we can continue discussion in, in our proper rules of order. Is there any further discussion, or Mr. McCaskill, would you have anything you'd like to add?
No, that's just what I was concerned about.
We have a concern that Worth and Elm be not included in, in the two intersections.
That's correct.
And I appreciate your concern about that, Bill. I go through that intersection every morning, every afternoon, and probably three or four times throughout the rest of the week, other than my daily commute. And I just don't see that much traffic in my commute in the early morning, late afternoon, and on the weekends. So, I appreciate your concern, but I personally don't think that's a big issue.
Can I, can I ask Chief Brown, have we had any problems with that intersection, Chief?
The last time Trevor asked me to look it up, I had Karen look it up in May. For the last year, we've had no crashes at Worth and Main, no crashes at Worth and Elm, and no crashes at Elm and Brewer.
Thank you. I finally remember when you were slating down Worth, it was hard to get stopped by the barricade, or you would leave the intersection. But it's better to do that than roll into the curb. It was a series of poor choices, fueled by you and poor decision-making. Well, we have a motion in front of us, and we have a second. Do I, I'll entertain a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
No? I guess that makes it six to one, it passes in favor. All right. Duly noted, Mr. McCaskill. Hey, big guy. John Evans is up now.
Thank you, sir. I will be passing around the copies of the... So, this request is to rezone a property located on Old Cox Road and Old Humble Mill Road to an amended R-15 conditional zone, low-density residential designation. It is for a residential planned unit development near the intersection of Old Cox Road and Old Humble Mill Road. The property is about 234.6 acres, it is currently undeveloped. There is one dwelling on the property that the applicant has indicated will be removed, and the request is for a total of 464 dwellings. The applicant is Southeastern Site Acquisitions LLC is the entity involved in the request. So, the property is involving the three parcels directly in the middle of, if you look at the map, the three parcels outlined in red, they are also highlighted, being that they are located within the city limits. And if we look at the surrounding area, you have some of the properties that you also see shaded, those are the North Carolina Zoo-owned properties. The larger blue parcel is part of the, the acne part of the NC Zoo, that has a tourism hospitality designation. And then if we go about a mile to the northwest along Old Cox Road, we have a mix of residential and some non-residential uses. The Sports Plex is about a mile and a half, or a little bit less, to the northwest. And then you have the Richland Village Manufactured Home Community just to the north of the property as well. So, this shows you a view of the adjoining properties, and then the subject properties are A1, A2, and A3 that are highlighted in yellow. And so each of these parcel owners was notified by both the applicant and staff within the time required. There have been signs posted on each of the three parcels at various locations on the properties, and the request has been properly advertised. So, the topography of the site on a large parcel like this, as we would expect, there is some kind of rugged terrain in locate, certain locations. The lower areas of the property are along the western side of the property that's west of Old Cox Road, where there's a stream, and also on the northern side of the property. There is a City Force Main also to the north, and the city pump station is also on, just to the northeast of the, of the property. You see the, the yellow dot kind of there on the, the top of the, of the parcel. The aerial map shows you the, the property and some of the... The aerial map shows you the property and some of the surrounding properties. So you have primarily lower-density land, residential land uses in this area and some differences. The previous plan had a total of 399 dwellings. There is some increase in the number of dwellings with this plan with 464 dwellings. The number of single-family and townhomes, that ratio has changed. There is a larger ratio of townhomes. We still have more single-family homes than townhomes at about a two to one ratio. The previous plan showed a roundabout coming into two of the main entrances off of Old Cox Road. So that is no longer proposed. There are left and right turning lanes coming into that main entrance with this request. The previous plan also envisioned a commercial use on the smallest, the southernmost parcel at the corner of Old Cox Road and Old Humble Mill Road. That is no longer proposed. There is a residential use here in that area, as we'll see on the site plan. There is overall more open space on the project. So the previous plan had just under 40% of the total land area that was open space that wasn't either developed as lots or roadways. This plan has almost 65% of that land area developed for open space. And along with that, has a smaller roadway footprint. So the previous plan had just over 21,000 linear feet of roadway that were proposed to be built to city standards and city maintained. This development has just under 16,000 square feet, so there's less of that footprint here as well. Both the previous plan and the current plan, I do want to point out, one of the more significant aspects of the buffer on both is a 30-foot street yard buffer on the existing roads, Old Cox Road and Old Humble Mill Road along the entirety of the property, other than the entrance ways and any required utilities. And the previous plan also had some existing vegetation that was preserved, as does this plan. Also, previous plan had street trees, this plan does. One difference is the previous plan had a fence on the eastern side of the property. So that is no longer proposed with this plan. This plan proposes existing vegetation. So if we look at the previous plan, you'll kind of get a sense that most of the property was developed. If you look, you see the roundabout there on Old Cox Road, and there were a total of five entrances in and out of the development. We look at the current plan, the green area is the open spaces proposed. And then you see the gray areas are the lots and the public streets that are proposed. So you see the townhomes are in the same general area on the northern side of the property. The patio-style homes are in the same general area on the, what would be the eastern side of Old Cox Road. And then the larger parcel on the western side of Old Cox Road, which would be, if you're kind of looking on the, this site plan, it would be on the upper part of the roadway that bisects the properties. Just right here in this area right here, you see a lot more open space on that portion of the property. The lots and the dwellings are more condensed and it leaves more open space. So that's more of the, a more significant change on the request. And so here you have, just kind of showing how many homes are in each section. So you have 73 townhomes that are 20 feet wide. So you have sort of a row style townhome. The applicant, I believe, will have some more information to share with you. 79 townhomes that are 26 feet wide. You also have some recreation area in the area between the townhomes and the other single-family dwellings on that side of Old Cox Road. That consists of an amenity center, some play courts, and a pool that's shown. And then 175 homes on the larger tract. And then the tract where there was going to be a commercial use has 24 single-family homes. We also have the note about the vegetation remaining whenever possible. Also, the street yard would contain a minimum of one shrub per 10 linear feet and one larger canopy tree for every 20 feet. That's noted on the plan. And you also see on the very bottom there of the screen, the area, just kind of in that red dotted line, that is where there was previously a fence proposed along the Old Humble Mill roadside where there would be natural vegetation proposed. Also, there's some floodplain on the property, but none of the lots or dwellings are within that floodplain. Sure, so the floodplain, I heard a question about that. It is along the northern side of the property, excuse me, this would be the western side of the property. This is headed toward Zoo Parkway, which would be over in this direction. And then the floodplain goes along this line right here on this side of townhomes. This is Old Cox Road, and then Old Humble Mill Road is right here. So that's just kind of a general idea of where that is located. So in terms of utilities, currently there is an existing public water main that runs along Old Cox Road. And then from the pump station, a very conceptual layout of this, which there would be more detail if this is approved in the preliminary plat review where there's engineering, construction drawings being reviewed. But what is proposed would be to run a sewer outfall from the city pump station that adjoins the property just along the area that you see outlined where that green line is located. Then it would come to the recreation area and then be extended along the new and existing public roadways. That's just generally kind of the concept that the applicants have given us in terms of utility locations. So in terms of entrances, as I mentioned, there are a total of five access points into the development. And so these are along Old Humble Mill Road, we have two access points. We have really three access points off of Old Cox Road. The, one of these that you see kind of circled right here would have a left and right turn lane. So there would be a 50-foot right turn lane and a 75-foot left center turn lane that NC DOT has reviewed the plans for and has stipulated for the development. And I will say, our other departments looked at kind of the street layout and the access points, and staff has deemed this to be acceptable. Typically, we do have access to adjacent properties, but because of the floodplain, just felt like that would be more problematic to try to have that access across a floodplain. And so this shows you the proposed street profile with a street that would be built to public street standards. You have the appropriate width of the right-of-way, the street. There's sidewalks shown on both sides of the street. You see the configuration for street trees. And then an additional 10-foot utility easement for any utilities such as water meters and things of that nature that would need to be within that easement. Also, the cul-de-sac radius has been reviewed. It is 45 feet from the center line, so it's a 90-foot diameter cul-de-sac. That exceeds NC DOT requirement, so we have reviewed that and deemed it acceptable. So in terms of just the general layout of the lots with the townhomes and the single-family homes, what we have is, of course, the townhomes are attached units. So there's a zero side setback on each of those sides, and they're in groups of anywhere from three dwellings to six dwellings per structure. And you have a, that is a 20-foot, excuse me, 25-foot rear setback and a five-foot side setback that's shown. There is a condition that would allow accessory structures to be built at a 10-foot rear setback, which would be consistent with that allowance for other properties with R-15 zoning. So if someone wanted to put in like a very small shed or something on the single-family lots, for instance, they would be able to do so. Also, the driveways are shown at 12-foot wide for the 20-foot wide townhomes, and then 16 feet wide for the 26-foot wide townhomes and the single-family homes. So that is fairly consistent with what would allow for two vehicles in the driveways with the applicant has mentioned, and they will cover. And there is a condition for also a garage for each of the units as well. So looking at the property, just from Old Cox Road, if you're looking from the northwest side of the property, this is looking into the property as you're headed south. This is looking away from the property where the creek is located, headed northwest on Old Cox Road. This is if you're looking on Old Cox Road to the south. The intersection of Old Humble Mill Road goes off to the left. And so the property is on both sides of the roadway here. This is if you're looking from the intersection of Old Humble Mill Road. If you were looking to the north on Old Cox Road. This is if you're looking at the property from Old Humble Mill Road. This would be looking east from Old Cox Road. And then this is looking further east on Old Humble Mill Road. This is on the eastern side of the property. This is looking on the southern side of the property on Old Cox Road, if you're looking to the north. And then this is looking further to the south on Old Cox Road, kind of show you the surrounding area there. So in terms of road classification, both Old Cox Road and Old Humble Mill Road are state-maintained. They are both minor thoroughfares. And the data from NC DOT on the traffic counts in 2023, Old Humble Mill Road had an average annual daily traffic count of 1,100. The capacity is at 13,600 on that roadway. On Old Cox Road, the data to the northwest closer to Zoo Parkway is for 2,400 vehicles per day between Zoo Parkway and Walden Road. And that is built at a capacity of 10,200 vehicles per day. And so the traffic impact analysis, I think the applicant will speak to that. But that has been presented to city staff and North Carolina DOT to show the 464 dwellings. NC DOT has indicated the turning lanes would be the required improvement from Old Cox Road to Sierra Ridge Road. That's that main intersection that was on the map earlier. In terms of parking, RV parking is prohibited on-site. There is a note on the site plan and also a condition that requires that they not be on-site. And then resident and visitor parking requires a minimum of two spaces per dwelling in the driveways and/or the garages to meet zoning requirements. There's also some designated visitor parking that you see on the site plan, particularly closer around the townhomes, and some on-street parking availability as well in different locations. So the comments that we have given the applicant would be regarding more detail that would come at a review for zoning permitting if this request were to be approved. Those include items related to showing phasing so that proper turnarounds are provided if there is some phasing involved in the project. Clarification on accessory structures and setbacks that I mentioned. Clarification on perimeter buffering and landscaping detail. Street detail, one of the items on River Otter Road is there's some islands that are shown in that. That would need to be clarified on a final site plan to ensure that that meets city requirements as far as the street profile. And then detail on the dwelling types and garage information and utility and street detail that would come at the preliminary plat phase. So one significant modification with the conditional zoning that goes above and beyond the ordinance requirements is the 30-foot street yard buffer that's shown on Old Cox Road and, I should actually say, Old Humble Mill Road as well for both roadways. So the property is not designated on the land development plan specifically, but there are a number of requests that support the request. We have six items that are supportive of the request on the land development plan, only three that are negative toward the request. And so if we get into the conditions, I do have those, I won't read through all of them, but if there are questions about them, I'll be glad to cover them. But just in summary, what they include are the allowance for additions and accessory structures, requirements for garages and adequate parking, retention of vegetation, or planning of landscaping. And I also should note that there is a street tree proposed for each single-family dwelling as well. Any maintenance responsibilities of the homeowners association, just to make sure that's clearly spelled out as we go through that process if the plan's approved. Turnarounds, mail delivery, and timing of amenities being built. Sidewalk requirements, that those would need to connect every unit and the amenities, which is consistent with what's shown on the plan, but that's just reiterated in the conditions. And then the permitting process is covered, so this would have to go through NC DOT's formal permitting processes and go through the technical subdivision reviews, zoning permitting reviews, and NC Department of Environmental Quality. They would be looking at any sort of environmental concerns regarding streams and things of that nature.
There'll be time for public comment.
So go through, so I think that's kind of a summation of the conditions, but if there are questions on those, I'll be glad to go back. So our final analysis on the request is in reviewing the land development plan. Even though we don't have a specific land use designation on the plan, there are some specific items that are covered in the plan on the southeastern area. So that recognized that the 64 bypass would change the character of the area, and we anticipated additional growth in the area. But it also emphasized the preservation of rural character and protecting gateways leading to the North Carolina Zoo. And we have seen increased interest in this area with a lot of economic development announcements. And this area has been, has seen a good bit of growth due to that. And so if we look at this plan and compare it to the previous plan that has been approved and remains so, it is actually providing more open space, providing greater clustering of dwellings. And it also strikes a balance between preserving the natural areas and providing active recreational amenities, having well-planned growth and housing opportunities as well. So given that overall kind of looking at the plan, we believe it is consistent with the land development plan. And so with the conditions and those other comments, just to make the applicant aware of for the zoning permitting process, we believe that it is consistent with the land development plan and recommend approval. The planning board also reviewed this request on Monday and had a positive recommendation and adopted that consistency statement. So I'll be glad to pause at this point and take any questions of counsel.
Any questions for Mr. Evans from counsel?
I have a question.
Yes.
So the chart that you showed indicated that the previous property had stormwater control measures, and this one does not.
Is that because this one has more open space?
Thank you for that question. So yes, the previous plan did propose stormwater measures which could come through a stormwater device such as a retention pond or something of that nature. And so this plan does not have a permanent stormwater controls proposed. And I believe the applicant will, you know, want to speak to that part of the request. So thank you for pointing that out.
There is curb and gutter in place on the streets, which will require, there will be a storm drain system by default of it.
Right, but just a retention pond.
As far as any large features, apparently they have a design that, not showing it at this time, I guess is a...
Correct, yes, sir.
Well, we're... I'll answer that question, and then we'll get back this little bit more in order. And just to share with y'all how this will work so that we can be sure everyone has all their questions with an informed answer. Staff will make their presentation of what the applicant has proposed, and then share with us the planning board's recommendation with the details that have been offered at this time to be required for a zoning district. this time to be required for a zoning district, just a zoning district. There are a number of design features that would have to be, if, whether it's approved, if it were to be approved, there would be more specific detail at that time that would come from other agencies. And after John has concluded the questions, the applicant will share with us any further information they would like. Then we will open the floor for any and all questions y'all would like to have, and we will endeavor to get answers for them. If that, everyone follow that. So, everyone will be, enjoy their each time to inquire and have their questions answered. So, is there any further questions for John at this time? Hearing none, we'll call on developers to make their presentation and share with us what they, the information they have, and then we will get into some specific Q and
Good evening. And my name's Robert Will Hoyt, Will Hoyt Hatchell, 100 Sunset Avenue, right down the street. George Kearns is intern this summer, be assisting in this matter. Let me just comment that, and that was an excellent question by Councilmember Mr. Heath. This property has been reformulated. It was all previously annexed by the city and rezoned two years ago. This property has over 64% open space. Previous property was about 39.2%. This accomplishes a lot. We have some engineers tonight that will shed some light on that, Mr. Paul Stimson, and he'll be speaking shortly after I'm finished. We represent Southeastern Site Acquisitions. They wish to take this property and transform it to a more, a community, a residential community, a really top-notch one. They are doing single-family homes and townhomes. Single-family homes and townhomes. No commercial is part of this request. As a result, we have Paul Stimson, engineer from Winston-Salem here to discuss the preliminary plat plan and stormwater. We have Richard Adams, Kimberly Horn out of Raleigh. They did the traffic impact analysis called the TIA. And Tom Flanagan is representing the developer, if council has any questions about the project. As you can see, this property is off Old Cox Road and down Old Humble Mill Road. A lot of it's open space. There's still, there's a lot of land here. And one of the features in looking at these pictures is this. They're going, we're going to comment about removing a fence. I want you to look at these pictures. There's a lot of open space there. There's also a lot of border that around this property are natural trees. We're going to submit two counts to the staff, and we discussed this with them, a natural border around the property as opposed to putting a fence around the property. Cutting trees to put a fence up is almost counterproductive when you're wanting free throw of wildlife and everything else. So, what's the plan? We're not changing the zoning. It's an R-15 conditional zoning. It's going to remain R-15 conditional zoning. Single-family homes, 20-foot width townhomes, 26-foot width townhomes. It's going to be a preliminary estimate. Now, the city estimated about 2.15. We think it's more like 1.97. It's hovering around the two because we include area in the right ways. But two dwellings per acre. We're not talking about four, five, or six, as happens in other larger urban areas. 150.673 acres of open space is a game changer. That's a remarkable number, remarkable number, especially if you see the size of this development. And there's less than 20% impervious surface. Y'all have heard this many times before. 24% is the magic number because the, and I want to compliment Mr. Evans for noting the 30-foot street yard buffer along Old Cox Road and Humble Mill Road will really set this housing development apart. You've got evergreen stuff. These are all according to city standards. One canopy tree. You've got the natural buffer to be in there whereby, instead of a previous fence condition. And natural buffers, as you saw, the lot of, lot of the property, and I think we were trying to figure the natural percentage, but it was high. About three-fourths of that property was vacant and unoccupied around this proposed development. So, the fence to us is not really conducive ecologically or for any type of allowing wildlife to roam over these areas, especially at night when people are not moving around that much. So, as we look at the city staff that already commented on this, it's going to be curb and gutter, and they're going to be, they have a tree in front of every home plant. The radius for the cul-de-sac, as duly noted by the city staff, meets DOT requirements, meets so we can have garbage trucks, we can have fire trucks, we can have public services can maneuver in this subdivision. Well, every dwelling is going to have a garage. On the single-family homes, there's going to be, you know, two-car garage, and there'll be enough driveway space to park two more, four cars. 26-foot wider townhomes, two-car garage, two behind it, also four. And the smaller townhomes for a lot of the folks that are single widows, et cetera, one-car garage and one parking space. All units will be two stories or less. These are some renderings of some single-family homes. The developer is going to prepare the site. They will seek out builders to come in. They're not going to just do one phase, the whole phase. They're going to build different types of homes and see if they can put some there and go out and attract what attracts buyers. We think there'll be great interest in this. I think there'll be families coming here. As you're well aware of all the development, the mega site and everything else, these will provide some quality homes and neighborhood for our community. And there's an example of the smaller townhomes. These are just renderings, but that's what generally has been done by this developer. This is not, this is developer's first rodeo. And people say, well, we're worried about this. The two main principles of this developer, both are from Randolph County. Both are from Randolph County. These are not Charlotte people. These are not big city people. They were, they went to high school. Okay? So, as we look, parking spaces, we've got 100, some auxiliary parking spaces. The planning board is a stickler on parking spaces. They don't, the city doesn't like cars parked all along the road. They've got additional providing. The engineer put that in the preliminary. It's an average of about 3.9 parking spaces per unit. We feel like we've tried to address parking concerns. As DEQ, and this, Mr. Stimson will get into this in more detail, to even qualify for low-density housing, you know, you can have more than 24% built-upon area, basically two dwellings per acre. This project fits the state's requirement, and DEQ's got a, I mean, the city of Ashburn will tell you DEQ requirements can be very stringent, and that's where the guidelines are. It's predicted to have, you know, 18% or less than 19%, let's say less than 20%, okay? So, bottom line is 1.977 per acre is really efficient use, and they're not trying to spring in overcrowded. Mr. Stimson will also touch upon some sewer capacity about the townhomes and the number of bedrooms per unit, an estimate of about 15, not 15, 50 units. This is bedrooms. Some units are larger than others, but they're, they don't think they're going to cause a problem with capacity. This project is not going to be built overnight. You're not going to have these homes just appear overnight. I don't know if the people have been to certain lakes. I saw one time they brought in, I guess, a modular home where they came and they put it in three or four pieces, and boom, they had a house in three days. Well, that's not what's going to exactly. I mean, it's one of those situations whereby this is going to take time and for sales, et cetera. You got to, developer's going to spend some time getting this property prepared. It's going to take a lot of grading, and you know there's a rumor, there's a lot of rock in Randolph County. Lot of rock. You have a lot of grading. That's right. And they know this, and they're prepared to deal with it. Bottom line is, they feel like they're going to make this, this development will be complementary to the area. It's right below the zoo, it's above the sportplex, and so they're trying to address some, and I will, let me point out this point. Why is it roundabout? And I think Mr. Stimson and Mr. Richard Adams will talk about this. DOT gave their input. They didn't think it would be as effective here as it would be up a little bit up the road, up there on Zoo Park, closer to Zoo Parkway in that area. I'm going to let the engineer discuss that, but it wasn't something that the developer said, well, let's just take that out. DOT reviewed it. They came with the turn lane, and they were, they did that because guess what? Old Humble Mill averages about 1,100 cars a day. You say, well, how's that compare? Well, Dixie Drive used to be about 40-some thousand, and there's about 60-some thousand on I-85 going through Trenton. So, as you've got a point, then I think the engineer will talk to you about an action report. We discussed that in great length in, for the plan board, and I'm going to let him talk about his findings on that. So, we've got no RVs going to be allowed. We're going to have a homeowner association with restrictive covenants, and it's going to be enforced by the homeowner association. City's not going to have to send code people out there. They're going to have their own people enforcing rules in that, in this housing development. All trash and recycling. They're going to have rollout carts. Why? Because that's what your garbage truck, how they pick them up. You got to have just under, over 3.64 acres of sidewalk. Got amenity center with a pool. No private driveways are going out the back of any of the housing units on any state roads. Not on Old Humble Mill, no on Old Cox Road. It's all you have to go through the entrances approved by DOT. Curb and gutter, and as noted by city staff, the roads will be sent by, built by city standards. I think, as you see, there's a lot of green, over 151 acres. And now I'd like to call Mr. Paul Stimson with LaBella, so just to come up and discuss a little bit about his findings on the faults on the preliminary plat and the stormwater. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time, and we appreciate your consideration with this approval. We're real excited about this master plan, and we feel like it's a good, reasonable plan. As mentioned, it's low-density. And by NC DEQ standard, which is North Carolina Department of Environment, Environmental Quality, their threshold is to keep the built-upon areas lower at 24% or less. And this development is at 18.72%, and the dwelling units are below their threshold as well. So, we feel that it's master planned well. And in speaking with the developer, there will be a storm drainage system designed, and the typical standard is for a 10-year storm. So, the piping systems we designed for that storm, and the developer wants to go beyond that standard, the typical riprap energy dissipators, which are rock riprap, about sizable football, at the end of the pipes where the pipes daylight, say at the back of these lots. And there'll be intermittent pipes to disperse the flow down to the floodplain. But the developer has agreed to go above and beyond and design the rock energy dissipators for 25-year storm. And that makes a more robust energy dissipator that's long-term, more stable. And what it will do is let the flow go by sheet flow from, say, at the back of the lots, the gray areas. It'll have all that distance. In some cases, there's 300, 400 feet of open space, grass, natural area where the runoff can infiltrate, be treated naturally before it even gets to the 100-year floodplain, which are the areas shown in white on the plan. And we feel that's very reasonable, and that'll be good for the environment. Also, we will have to go through NC DEQ to get the erosion and sedimentation control plan approved. And they have stringent standards to make sure that the sediment's staying on the site, and there's no off-site sedimentation into the surrounding streams. So, we'll go through those channels, get the proper permits. Also, the plans will have to be approved by North Carolina Department of Transportation for driveway permits on the state roads, and also encroachment agreements for the utilities. And the DOT will do a very thorough review to make sure the public's protected and the improvements such as right turn lanes, left turn lanes are implemented before they will issue the permit. And it was mentioned that the lanes were 50 and 75 feet. Those are the storage lengths only. So, you have the 50 feet of storage for the right turn lane plus the long tapers associated with that. So, it's a much bigger improvement for both the left and right turn lanes, and those will be implemented to facilitate the traffic flow. Sanitary sewer, I've done some coordination with the city and Mr. Roney, and thankfully the pump station down in the northeastern quadrant of the site has the capacity to serve the site. Would have to go to the NC DEQ in Raleigh to get the proper permits for the sanitary sewer, and they're the ones that base the flow on 75 gallons per day per bedroom. And it was mentioned that this will have, I want to say, 1,550 bedrooms for a total flow of 116, 250,000 gallons per day. The open space is very good. That is a very good number. I like Mr. Attorney's number. Remarkable, because we do many master plans, and hardly ever do you get to a percentage close to 64%. The one benefit of this plan is the street linear footage. It was at least 6,000 linear feet of street less than the other development, and we think that's a plus, although this will provide a good walkable community because the developers will have sidewalks on both sides of the streets. And the buffers have 6.19 acres of buffer, 30 feet along the streets. And if there's not trees there, then those will be planted at that rate, that way we'll sure there'll be an evergreen buffer there long-term. There are 48 additional parking spaces. Up in the area of the townhomes, there were five small clusters of five parking spaces each, and then down at the amenity center, there were 33 other parking spaces. We feel like this development really preserved the natural areas and are just really excited about it, and really appreciate your consideration in this approval. I'll be glad to answer any questions, if there may be.
One thing, since the question came up in a way about the, about the storm drain, rainwater, road control, I just wanted to have you share just a little bit that when
I just wanted to, uh, ha- have you, uh, share just a little bit that when the grading process is going on, construction of it, they may see any number of, uh, uh, erosion control devices, whether they be sediment ponds, retention, that sort of thing during that. But then, uh, upon completion, they'd be closed, closed and finalized, and you're anticipating having your storm drain outlets, it's strategic areas, uh, uh, with, with the riprap pads dissipate it, slow the flow down. Is that my understanding that correctly?
Yes, sir, and will dissipate the flow energy and also slow the velocities to make sure that some of these pads may be twenty feet long.
Do you have any general estimate of how many SDOs you'll have, uh, in the final?
Uh, storm, uh, uh, erosion control measures? Probably on the south side, at least probably eight areas. And that sounds like a lot, but really it's a good thing, because...
More, more's better.
It dissipates the flow, it doesn't concentrate it, which can sometimes, oftentimes, cause more erosion. If you dissipate it and have it prorated, it's much better in my opinion, 'cause it dissipates before it even gets down to the, uh, the streams.
And in any plan you propose, would have to be approved and stamped by NCDQ?
Yes, sir. Go for those standards.
Thank you.
Right. Any other questions for me?
Any other questions for the engineer from Engineer's Standpoint?
This might be more for John, but soon after we had our little meeting, I heard something about that, that this lift station's gonna have to be approved if we have all these houses down there, it, what's the situation on that?
So, um, I mean, that would be something we would have to analyze with the, um, uh, with the preliminary plat review, because it could depend on how this development is phased, what development may have occurred, um, between now and the time that this is, is online. So, there's, there are a lot of different variables that would have to be looked at, but that was just simply noting that those variables will have to be, you know, reviewed. So, if, it's, it's, um...
Well, if it's all about that, maybe I think that's what Bill's asking. If it's all built out...
Yeah, well, I, yeah.
Yeah, the answer's yes. Yeah, pump station will have to be upgraded, and we'll have to negotiate with the developer about what those cost shares are.
And it's gonna have to happen either way, which you put, you put another half million visitors at the, at the zoo, since they opened Asia, and, and there's two more continents under design, the, uh, uh, I don't know if I'm happy or sad, you know, good luck, bad luck, that we've outrun a nineteen seventy-two design.
Well, I mean, we need to look at that, I mean, the developer will help with some with that, you know, that's, you know, we'll talk to them about that at some point in time.
Right, that, that is something that will be looked at very closely, uh, at that part of the development process.
Isn't that already on our capital improvements plan?
So, uh, a, an increase, but not an increase with all these units. All that would have to be a part of that, and also, we have a system development charge and an acreage fee that's being evaluated at the same time. So, all that's coming, converging.
But that lift station is on there.
Yeah, it, it can't be condition of the zoning, but it can be condition of future development. And if you ever develop the sixty-four bypass forty-two interchange, that same pump station is the closest gravity flow access to that interchange, which is also, that opens up the sides of property and several more up there. It's, it's the low spot.
I'm not sure who's supposed to address phasing, but, I mean, could, could somebody address it in terms of, I, I mean, I know a lot, there's a lot of variables in there, but how long would you predict if the economy stays in a certain way, you know, it stays well and buildable, would you expect to have a total build out on that?
Well, first of all, my name's Tom Flanagan, um, with Southeastern Site Solutions. We appreciate your time tonight, and hopefully, we can answer the questions the best we can. So, as we talked about in planning board, uh, we have no desire to build this all at once. Trust me. So, we will, once we pick a builder partner, which we have not chosen a home builder yet, uh, we will work with them on developing the project in a economic and reasonable growth period. If, I, I can't tell you two years, I can't tell you ten. What I can tell you is that just the construction part of the earth movement and all the utilities, this is probably a three-year build project before even a house has really started. Um, and of four hundred and sixty-four units, Ashboro's a growing town. We, uh, we love the city, we want people to love the city like we do. If it was the best-selling community in the state of North Carolina, it would only probably sell twenty houses a, a month. That's, that's a long time, that's still two years of absorption. We're not gonna sell twenty houses a month. Any builder that we work with, they aren't building that fast, and they're not closing them that fast. Uh, so this is gonna be a long project, uh, and we hope that the city's infrastructure is either improved or we can work with the city on those improvements as we go through the process. Again, this is, um, this, you know, this is a zoning hearing, all those, all those technical details are TRC-related items. So, this is just us, our first step of trying to be able to do this. But we're excited to do it, we're excited to work with it, and it will establish a long-term relationship between Southeastern Site acquisitions and the city of Ashboro, and we're excited for that process. And I'll be more than, more than happy to answer any questions.
Tom, thank you for that, that sharing that and that explanation. Uh, I was trying to hit on that a little bit earlier, and then this is a zoning hearing to determine whether or not the, the plan, we'll call it even almost two-dimensional, the layout is acceptable with X conditions, uh, uh, to fit, fit our wants, needs, and desires. The, uh, any of the mechanics of the matter come afterwards, 'cause there's no point in going through those exercises if you're not successful at this level, correct? In addition to, they're extremely expensive to go through.
Yes, they are, yes, they are, thank you.
I don't know if this is appropriate question for you or for Bob, but we identified a good number of conditions, or the conditions proposed by staff formidable to you as the applicant for, before we get too far down that rabbit hole.
I was gonna sum up.
Okay, I just wanted to address that on the record.
Um, so, if you don't have any more questions for me, I'll be more than happy to...
Any more questions?
All right, thank you all.
I'd like, uh, Richard Adams, uh, he's with Kimberly Horn, they, they studied the traffic and did the TIA analysis.
Thank you, Bob. Good evening, Richard Adams with Kimberly Horn. Thank you for, for hearing our case this evening. Real quickly, I do have some slides, hopefully, I'll operate this correctly. There we go, okay, um, I'll try to go quickly. We did a traffic study, and I wanted to share some information on that for the development, and this is the study area. As you can see, the blue dots and the red dots combined are all the intersections we looked at as part of the study. Blue dots, of course, being existing intersections, red dots being the new site access points. Um, you've already seen the site plan and talked about that, north is to the right, can come back to that as needed. We calculated the trip generation. Again, I should step back and say, this traffic study has already gone through your staff, been approved by your staff, gone through DOT and been approved by them. But also, at one point, we had a slight change in the number of units, so we went back and revisited the entire study, and your staff and DOT have approved the revised number with, with the higher unit count, so it's all in sync.
And these numbers represent a completely built-out project?
Yes, sir. And I should, just, just real high level, I should mention, we conducted traffic counts at all the study area intersections. We did, looked at a growth rate for the, kind of the ambient growth of traffic, um, and then, of course, added all the trips based on that trip table I was just talking about. So, and we look at the AMP cower and the PMP cower, the worst case on a weekday. So, uh, we're looking at the worst case, um, in both cases. So, I'm certainly not gonna read all the details of this table, green is good. Um, we have, yes, so, um, we have levels of service, we're all, um, A's and B's for the various intersections in the study area. Bless you. And, um, as I mentioned, DOT, um, let me, um, just back up, hold on for a sec. But DOT did, as was previously mentioned, um, we did not, as part of our analysis, require the turn lanes that have been brought up at Old Cox Road and Sierra Ridge, um, based on just purely the traffic numbers. However, DOT has said they want a left turn lane and a right turn lane at that intersection for southbound Old Cox Road. The applicant has agreed to that, that's been added to the plans, so that, so those will be built, um, and DOT is satisfied with that. Um, we also understood that there were some concerns about safety, and so we also did a crash analysis. We also do these studies for the department, for DOT, so we did this consistent with our methodology, um, for what we do on DOT. Um, we looked at a long section of Old Cox Road, as well as a section of Old Humble Mill Road, covering beyond the limits of the study in all direction, or excuse me, of the site in all directions. Like most roads are pretty, all roads in North Carolina, there are occasional crashes on the roads. Most of them are animal strikes, you know, people falling asleep or, you know, pulling off the road and hitting a tree or something. The, the key findings here are, we deserved, we, there were no concentrations of crashes in any locations that would cause a concern, no clearly correctable crash patterns, and the crash rates and the severity are both below the critical crash thresholds that DOT looks at. So, um, we also determined that DOT has conducted safety studies on Old Cox Road. HSIP is the Highway Safety Improvement Program. Um, in twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, they revisited that section of road. The one improvements we were able to find that has been put in out there is they added an advisory speed at one of the intersection, or excuse me, the curve ahead sign, um, on Old Cox Road, you know, there are certainly curves on that road, and so they have advisory speeds. It's, it's, you know, technically a fifty-five mile an hour road, they have an advisory, advisory speed was added to thirty-five miles an hour, just to let the driver know, uh, you need to slow down in the curve. Um, this is a graphic showing our recommendations, which again shows the new, we have added the turn lanes that DOT requested. Certainly don't see any need to go through all that detail there. So, this is, again, a summary of the traffic analysis. I've discussed this, but just to recap real quickly, um, it was a very large study area we looked at. Again, the study area was approved by DOT. All the intersections and movements are at level of service C or better, almost all of them are A's and B's. We had no significant crash patterns or resulting crash rates in the vicinity of the site. Um, we did add turn lanes at the request of DOT, um, and again, the TIA was reviewed and approved by DOT and city staff. So, that is my presentation, and happy to answer questions here.
Any traffic-related questions from council? We're hearing none, looks like you get off light.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your information.
Thank you for having me.
Yes, sir, Mr. Will Hoyt. There was a lot, we had neighborhood meetings, we had them two years ago, and we had one with regard to this property, and there was great concern of traffic on Old Humble Mill Road and speed. This developer doesn't control the highways, that is DOT, NC DOT does that. But we looked, took a look, and, um, Richard got us some numbers on this, that with regard to Old Humble Mill Road from two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty-three, or five years, there have been seven accidents on that road, and, uh, Old Cox Road had had ten, um, no fatalities. But bottom line is, is this, um, hopefully, when this project is being developed, uh, DOT will look at those roads, especially Old Humble Mill, and they're gonna have to look at it, because over a period of time, and like Tom has talked about, Mr. Flanagan, it's not gonna happen overnight, it's gonna take a few years to do the grading, and then, it, this project could be as much as five, seven, or even longer, ten years, being, because they're gonna start out doing a few projects at a time and see how they sail. But I feel like the, uh, the plan reviewed by staff, that it's, uh, consistent, and it's reasonable with the land development plan, that the developer agrees with all the conditions that are set forth in your packet with regard to staff. That's what conditional zoning is under NCGS one sixty D. The applicant and the city and the local government, whether it be the county or otherwise, agree to these conditions. And there are a lot of them, and they're, and they're, and plus, our developer is also subject to state guidelines, DEQ and everybody else, and that's when they'll get into the technical review with your staff and the state. It is gonna be a residential housing development. We think it's gonna be one that's gonna be, the county will be proud of. You know, the updated traffic study, the TIA report, DOT has given their blessing on it, and we respectfully request that this property has already been rezoned. We're asking that some of the conditions be changed, our plan be accepted, 'cause we modified it, and we have a hundred and, over a hundred and fifty-one acres of open space, and we'd ask that you approve this request. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Will Hoyt. At this time, we will now open the podium for, uh, uh, anyone else that wants to, uh, pose questions or speak in favor or opposition to the request. Come, please come forward, uh, state your name for us, and if you will, print your name so that we can have it correct for the record.
My name is Sarah Barnt, and my daughter and son-in-law own the property on the other side, on the Zoo Parkway side of this property. They're, they bump up against it. And I have my BS in agronomy, which is soil science, so I'm very familiar with diversion terraces and the runway that they're, they're talking about with the rocks. Our concern is, is that we already have a creek running beside us, we have one on the backside of us, and to have more water coming into that area, we are...
John, can you pull us up the, uh, the adjoining property owner's map, perhaps?
We think it's, uh, what do we say, Ronnie, it was B, BB, was the side that we thought? And when I'm looking at the topography of what's out there, why a retention pond? If you're building it during your pre-construction, why are you not just leaving it? I don't understand why, I think Mary, you had said that maybe it would be there while they're grading and, and doing all the pre-construction, um, grading, but why would you knock it down after you already have it there? To me, that makes no sense. But if you have, and you're talking about the rocks, like, I forget what you called it, but having that and then adding...
Velocity reduction pad, but...
Okay, but then adding a diversion terrace at the end of that to divert that, it, because it's grass, it gives it a more time to absorb. With this clay soil, I love North Carolina, but y'all have really bad soil until you get closer to the beach.
I think what the engineer was sharing with us, you may very well see that, uh, when, when they get the review and get it submitted to DEQ, that they did not specifically know the complete answer.
Okay.
Uh, as to what devices would be required.
Because my concern...
That was their, that was what their initial take was, is that's what...
My concern for the property in that, that are close to that floodplain or in that floodplain, you can divert it great away from this development, but you're just adding to that creek that's already, gets blasted, and if they're not correcting the creek at all, it's just gonna make the floodplain even worse.
Where your property is, which one of the...
Um, we think it's BB. BB, boy, boy.
BB, okay. All right, so you're, you're up the hill from that, I, I see the creek where you're...
Yeah, there's a creek on, on the...
Down at KK, that creek gets pretty wide and deep.
Yeah, yeah. And that's a big, that's a big concern, and I think, I may speak from, for some of the other people. I mean, you know, the wildlife is gonna be there, and, and the wildlife, whether you build or don't build, you're gonna have it. But it's the water that's the main concern for us.
The, um, uh, I'd ask, I'd ask the engineer, maybe this is a straightforward question.
Thank you.
There will be some requirements relating to, uh, pre and post runoff? Perhaps she's, she's, her question is more specific, then you may know the answer to it this exact moment.
Well, with this low-density project, we are proposing to let the flow disperse, as we mentioned, in many outlets, in sheet flow, and go down to the floodplain. In a high-density development, you might have to have a wet detention pond or a permanent measure, and those devices have to be maintained in purp- And those devices have to be maintained in perpetuity. But this is a low-density development.
And you can breed your own mosquitoes with it?
Sometimes. That's right. So in this low-density development, we're dispersing the flow through many, many pipe outlets that needed at the low points in the street. System be designed, the city of Ashboro standard. Developer is willing to go above and beyond the typical 10-year storm for the energy dissipators to go with a 25-year storm to be stable long-term. And, and the flows will sheet flow down to the floodplain.
And the standards you have to meet do include things like the runoff or the turbidity or the quality of the water leaving the site.
Right, and there will be measures during construction, skimmer basins.
Yes.
To, to facilitate...
But once you establish vegetation, they may not be needed.
Right, but a skimmer basin may be three feet deep. A wet detention pond could be 10 feet deep. Those can also be a liability in certain cases.
Does that, the phasing of this, does that address your question?
Not really, but I mean, it's, it's going to, like I said, if they did some kind of correction on the creek to make sure that when we have those storms...
Well, I think what they're saying is, is the DEQ is going to have them, have it corrected before it gets to the creek.
This development will not be in the floodplain whatsoever. We're going to stay up on the higher grounds and make sure our grading is not in the stream buffers. There will be 50-foot vegetated stream buffers, as shown in blue on the site plan at all those locations where there'll be no impervious area. But if a higher-density development were encroaching in those areas, then permanent stormwater control measures would be needed. But that's what we're respectfully requesting, since the streets are being minimized and the open space is at 64%. We are saying in this case, the permanent storm, stormwater control measures are not needed.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Come forward, please, and state your name and write your name on the sheet.
How you doing, Mayor? Counsel? I'm Ronnie Hassel. I live on the property labeled as BB right now. Me and my fiancee moved here roughly about...
Sign your name when you get changed.
Roughly about two years ago. We love this area. It's quiet, it's peaceful, friendly. However, within the, since we've moved here, we've had two major storms that have come through. And like my concern, I'm all about growth and development in, in the city. I work for the city of High Point. However, these two major storms with the creek that surrounds two sides of my property has completely flooded my back, I'm just shy of five acres and flooded my, my back pasture area. And when I say flooded, anywhere between two and four and a half feet of water. So my concerns is with the runoff from this property coming to the west side of the property that are proposed to build on, how is that going to impact the residents that live in my neighborhood on that, that western corner? Is it going to put more water, because the creeks can't handle what's coming through there right now? Even in somewhat of a mild storm, the creeks will get almost, almost full. So my concern is, is this going to create more runoff into the streams around our properties to where now I'm taking a potential of a house I just bought flooding? Thank God the water's never reached my house, it's come closed twice. But is this going to make my house flood?
What is being shared with us is that the function of the permitting process by the regulatory agency is supposed to give you assurance that no, it will not. And that's what our job is, to make sure they have been, they have those proper certifications to assure us of that. That's, that's the process.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, please, come on up. Signing? That's important to the clerk.
And I have my name badge on too. My name's Jennifer Cox. I grew up along the creek right off of Old Humble Mill, backs up to our property, which is off of Twin Creek. I think our lot is HH.
HH, okay.
So this lot is my mom's in her name. You know, it is our future property. It is my daughter's future dwelling. So I am looking at her, her well-being. One question, of your 60% of open area or whatever, how much, what percentage of that is floodplain? Has anybody calculated that? Because the pictures you showed, the majority of it was...
Well, if you look at the yellow area, and John Megan helped me with this, that, that, go back to, of the floodplain was hatched on the picture. Go back to the hole we were in. I think it showed it better. The, the areas with the little lines on them, they represent the floodplain, John?
Yes, sir, that's right.
The property lines for the proposed development are in red, although along there were HH, GG, EE. They're, they're in blue right through there. But that's the, that's the only portion of the property that I see that's in the floodplain. It's just that area right through there.
Well, and just based on these big maps, I mean, it looks like, just based on these big maps that we're looking at, the floodplain is not indicated as being part of the green area. If I'm looking at this correctly.
Correct. They're, they're not, they're not encroaching into the floodplain, but I think the question was...
But the runoff is going to go to the...
How many, how many acres of the parcel was in the floodplain? I think is what I thought I heard, but very few is what I...
Is floodplain.
Pardon?
Is floodplain.
Is floodplain.
Like non-useable, you can't cut, no cut zones.
Hatch lines is where the floodplain is.
Right, and no cut zones along the creeks.
Right, I mean, the K, the HH is right at the edge of the floodplain. The KK's in, the BB's in the floodplain.
So you're adhering to the 100 and 200-foot no-cut zone the state recommends for that? That's what I'm getting at.
The, the engineers are affirming yes. That's all I can really...
Look, the site plan of the floodplain is shown in white, so that all the green...
Oh, you're growing.
...space area is open space. But the area of the floodplain is in white. So we are not in that floodplain whatsoever. Not impacted, staying away from that floodplain.
So the floodplain, when's the last time the floodplain map that y'all were using was updated?
Yes, please. The blue shade is the stream buffers. That's really an open space area, and that's counted in the open space, just like the floodplain is. But those blue areas represent the vegetated stream buffers, because those were determined to be some stream areas right there, so it will not be disturbing those areas that are shown in blue, 50 feet on either side of that. And the floodplain is shown in white out above the green area. So that's just showing that we're not even close to that area. That's being totally left alone and not impacted whatsoever.
But what, when your water, all this additional water comes down, as you said, after it goes through its, its systems to make it clean, then it'll go to the floodplains?
Eventually, it goes downhill to the stream, but it's going to be dissipated and infiltrated. And that, all that rainwater that lands on the green space is going to infiltrate versus if it were streets or built upon areas, it's less than that.
It don't infiltrate a whole lot around that bridge.
That's, that's a, it'd be a state DOT culvert question, the state maintains that road.
And just for record, you know, part of that lands on 100-year floodplain, and they have since changed it already because of developments and the increase in rain or weather, whatever we're having, you know, and it's predicted to only occur...
Down where the basin land meets the corner line.
Sometimes the DOTs will upgrade their culvert. Sometimes they will, instead of a 50-year storm...
And so our, it comes to us before it goes to y'all.
But sometimes the DOT will upgrade their culvert to 100-year storm instead of the 50-year. So that's really up to the NC DOT if there's an obstruction at a state road.
Y'all gonna have to go somewhere. And so for me, paying taxes on this house or insurance, let's say insurance, it's going to take me off 100-year floodplain, and it's going to put me on like 50-year floodplain once all that development's done.
I'm not sure. I know to get flood insurance, houses have to be elevated say at least a foot above the 100-year floodplain anyway.
But what I'm saying is, it's, I've seen it in the last 10 years flood twice past the 100-year floodplain. No, the lines, the topography map.
How did you know that it went beyond that white floodplain line?
I got pictures we can show you, where it goes all the way to Old Cox Road.
Okay.
But as far as zoning, that's kind of where I'm going.
Well, no, this is, this is a zoning. What you're asking are questions that will be answered in the TRC process and through NC DQ when we submit construction drawings. This is not a zoning, and I understand your concern, trust me. And we have to build and abide by the standards and statutes of the local municipality and the state municipality, which is more stringent of those rules. We have, we can only use the maps provided to us by the state. So if this is the state and the local government's floodzone map, we have to use that material to base our design off. We have to exceed or improve the quality of the area. And what we're trying to do is just get the right to start the design process. That's all we're trying to do here tonight. So these are all very valid questions, but we can't answer them. And I can't, I can't help, I can't help answer questions about future flooding, previous flooding. Alls I can answer is, we will get into the design process, and we will do our best to work with the state agencies and the city of Ashboro to design the project where it is a self-contained project and does not affect the neighbors as little as possible. And it's going to be, it's going to be a graded site, it's going to be a construction site. There's going to be things that happen. But when this project is done, it is hopefully not going to affect your property value. That is not our intention. And we can only work with the information that we're providing.
Not even so much property value as...
Again, if, if your house is too close to the, to the existing floodplain, we can't help that.
But it's not now.
And, and it shouldn't be. The state, the state, the state regulates the maps, not the private developer, not the city of Ashboro. The state of North Carolina regulates the flood maps. And the state of North Carolina insurance department regulates where those flood areas are.
Your TRC and all this stuff you've been explaining goes to the whole...
Our TRC project, no, zoning is pre, zoning is all before that.
Let me ask a question here. Let me see if I, I can clear this up just a minute. With, with, with some grasp of, of, of the matter here. You, you, the developer and its engineers are required to use the information furnished by the government.
That is correct.
And, and, and then issue a proposal of how to prevent everything that she's just saying. Then they will review it and determine whether or not it accomplishes that goal.
That is correct.
If it does not, it will be rejected and you get to draw it again.
That is correct.
And, and, and you keep drawing it until you get it to where it will accomplish not affecting her whatsoever, at least in theory, by the office of DEQ.
That is correct.
That's how, that is how that works.
That is how that works. We can keep drawing it until they finally give us a check.
So the question...
Or you build their pockets, which is very known to happen in Randolph County. No, you can't go there.
The, let me, let me put it a different way. The development of this property will not expand the floodzone.
No, should not expand the floodzone.
I mean, that, it should not expand. I mean, because a floodzone is something totally independent from that and by development. And if it was to affect that, that's where the state would come in. They will turn down his plane. Yeah, they would turn it down. So that, that will not, the floodplain is...
So it's not going to be, okay.
And if it does, that's where he gets to keep redrawing. If I'm correct. And if he doesn't have that certificate, he can't give him a permit to build this subdivision.
Correct. So in 20 years, when my daughter moves into this home, and, you know, and it's now in floodplain, how, how do you, how do you go about saying, "I told you so"?
Well, I don't guess I have a answer for that. I can't say that far into the future, other than our regula, our regulators...
It's going to be different by the end.
I can't give you warranty on that. Our regulators say they can. If they can, great. If they can't, I can't answer for them.
But you also have to remember that floodplain is, is designed for 100-year flood. So what we've experienced in the last few years, we've had 1,000-year floods. There's no guarantee. You can't build roads, you can't build cities.
Well, it's already been changed. I mean, we're, we're not on floodplain and we are now.
So the preliminary map that is proposed is what they'll have to build to. And it has some slight changes and variances from this map, but that'll be the best standard we have today.
And it's sort of, it's not under the purview of this board to be able to answer that. It's under the purview of the state of North Carolina.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak before us tonight?
Are you there?
Doing well, I hope you are.
Doing well. And my name is Judy E. Banks. And if I start to speak, this is not something for or against the development. I've lived there all my life, and we understand that it's coming. It's not a matter of negative comments, so please understand that in the beginning. Just had a couple of questions. The first was just, I actually just noted as we did two years ago that this will be an increase for law enforcement. It'll be an increase for the trash pickup and fire. So hopefully, you know, as they do the phases, we'll be able to afford that with the city, increasing to make sure our law enforcement can go to additional areas. The second was just, and I forgot, I apologize, I was going to ask you the other night and I forgot, is there's been a notification to Randolph County Schools and Randolph County Government of the increase in numbers. Two years ago, Randolph County Schools were notified about the increase as far as, you know, for their projected, for their schools. I was just wondering if that has been done.
John, Mr. President?
I can address that. So yes, ma'am, we, we did send that to the officials at Randolph County School as far as the site thing. We made them aware of the request. And also, police and fire were included in the review process for, for the proposal.
And the new fire station is already underway, about three miles up the road.
Yes. And this is the third one, this was mentioned two years ago. And it was noted two years ago that there could not be ADA sidewalk compliance. That is a federal compliance, and so I'm just having concerns. I know this is preliminary stages, and they said they would do the best they can. But with the way everything is graded through there, it is very steep. And that's a concern for me. Maybe some of you don't have someone that you're concerned about with disabilities, but once you do, you can think a little bit more about sidewalks and things like that. So my understanding of any new development, it should be ADA sidewalk compliance. And the last one two years ago was not. They said that there could not be in those areas off of Old Humble Mill Road because the, that area was too steep.
I think that they, they had a different layout, and this looks to be much flatter running the top of the ridge.
Yeah, so it's just, it's one of my concerns I would like for, as it goes through the process, because we don't get notifications, obviously, when you start to proceed in the process. So we don't know when the next meetings are. I would just like to make that noted, that we would really like to make sure those sidewalks are compliant.
Thank you.
And as far as the...
The only exception to ADA compliance is when topo is just prohibitive and it would be in the mountains. Very few locations where you would even have that.
And I know you, unfortunately, you weren't here two years ago, but two years ago, they were passing it with, there were some areas that they said they could not do it. It was a different plan, yeah, it was a different plan. So, and the fourth would just be, if you could go back to the map where it shows the green. Again, I don't live directly adjacent, I live on the road. But I'm speaking just for others, is if you look in the area that's off of Old Humble Mill Road, there's now two areas that are being built. And there's very little greenway between the development on the right-hand side and the person's, the next person's property. So I know that they are very against having a fence. But again, you're going from a very rural area to a lot of houses right up against someone else's property. So I would like for them to consider, they said they want to be good neighbors as they build this. Mr. Will Hoyt used the term "Bambi." Obviously, Bambi's going to move out a lot of area, in a lot of areas due to the construction. We understand that completely. It's just something to consider, there's very little greenery there in between those spaces of the other people's properties. That's it. I appreciate your time. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Is there anyone else that would like to address the audience tonight?
My name is Jennifer Cox. I live on Old Humble Mill Road, right beside this guy's trailer park. And I was excited that there was going to be a fence built with the last plan because I, my property borders... cause I, my property borders right where the townhomes are gonna be built. And I've lived beside this huge trailer park all my life, and he's built, um, his very meager playground, which has a couple of swings and a bit, small basketball court, right up against my property with a well-worn path to my property where we've had trespassers all my life. It's been a big problem.
Not that this is the subject tonight, but my property joins the humble parcel.
Yes, with this very small border, and there's a well-worn path from your property, my creek. And the people that trespass think that it is part of his property. It is a problem. He's done, done nothing all these years to prevent it. And that that's a vote for there being a fence. And a fence makes good neighbors. It's true. We're not good neighbors because we don't have a fence. And that's all I wanted to say. There's been incidences with the police, uh, the peop- the kids that come there, the people that come there think that they are on his property. They fish, it, we run them off. It doesn't matter. We put up signs. They tear them down. Uh, it looks like his entrance from his playground, it looks like a, onto our cross, the small border of someone else's property. It looks like a spa entrance from the trailer park onto my property. It's al- it's almost like, of course, they think it's his property. It's part of his park. And, uh, he's building, his trailer park is doubling in size. I think he's been ma- been made to make a bordering fence, maybe for the part that he's new. But he's done nothing all these years. And it's, it's upsetting.
Tha- thank you for your observations and comments. Anyone else that would like to come before us?
Evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Atalo Fenberg of twenty-six hundred Old Humble Mill Road. Could I show you where on the map?
The property, what you're talking about?
Thank you, sir. So, um, my property is E and D. So I own thirteen acres on both sides of the creek with my sister Eve and my brothers. Um, so I have, uh, a question and some remarks about the need for a fence bordering, uh, this project and the creek, parallel to Humble Mill Creek right there. You see, it's a long area. My eleven acres there at part E. So if this huge project with all these new people isn't bounded by a fence, then all the residents of this project will be in and around that creek. It's the prettiest part of the creek in both directions. It's got great big rocks that you have to jump across to cross the creek. And, um, and it has areas that are deep all year. It's not a small creek. And, uh, uh, it's quite dangerous when it rains and moves fast. But if there's no border fence, then there will be people down there all the time. Lots of people. Um, people will walk to the Zoo City Zooplex along that creek, um, crossing multiple private property owners. People will cross the creek in order to go towards, um, the, uh, Richland Village. People hunt in the area and there are no lights. And, uh, as Eveie said, there's always been trespassers. Uh, but now there will be many, many coming from both directions. It'll be happening daily in the dark when, uh, in the winter, when ice, when the rocks are icy, when the water's high and moving fast. Children will visit the- the creek daily. I certainly did. Um, it's a beautiful place, and they can see it right there. It's in their backyards. My brother was bitten by a poisonous snake there as a kid, and another child had his head split open when he slid on his belly down a rock into the creek. Tracked his head wi- right open, as if you were in a water park. Uh, my question is, doesn't the, uh, developer and his prospective tenants, don't, wouldn't they much prefer to see a nicer fence that he would build rather than the ugly patchwork that I and- and others will feel the need to construct right on, right behind his houses, right on the, right on the edge of the pasture? A fence, I feel, serves the interests of safety, privacy, law enforcement, and emergency services, and the success of this project. Good fences make good neighbors and safer communities. So I hope that you will impress upon the developers many neighbors' needs for some boundary that's not affi- some trees that, um, will, will disrupt the community less as possible, as soon as possible. This is a major change to the area. It's a city in itself. It's coming, and I hope that you will consider this need for those of us who live there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, we- we see what it's like without a fence, without some, being, being made. People don't do the right thing just because it needs to be in the plan, obviously.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
My name is Victoria Harris. I have the, I got here late, so I don't know if I missed this or not.
Okay.
But all of the, uh-
Please sign in as you, as you go.
All of the signs that have been posted along the road, um, maybe a month ago, three weeks ago. Um, I'm not sure if all the trees are going to be cleared all at once, or if it's gonna be done in stages. Um, did I miss anything earlier?
They haven't dis-
How it's going to be cleared or the areas that have been posted.
They did not discuss any phasing construction plans with us, since this is a zoning case and not a phased construction case.
Okay. So-
So we don't know.
You don't know. Okay. And- and at what point of the process does, does that become the-
When they apply for their grading permit to the city of Ashboro, it'll tell how many disturbed acres there will be at one time.
And is it usually that it all gets cleared at one, in one shot?
It is highly unusual for that to happen. I did ask that question, and I understand, I mean, I understand they can't answer specifically.
Right, right.
But, and- and I, but, and I was asking based reference on previous developments possibly.
I've seen, I've seen other signs and just, you know, it's been ready.
Right, well, that, that amount of property, that's not feasible to do it like that. They'll work out one end, you didn't go on and get it, and then I would assume, and then go to another one.
I was curious because-
Another section.
A lot of, uh, wildlife is gonna have to be absorbed somewhere else, and I just, the issue with the water is a deal also. So, also with the water, it's going to be done in increments to be able to see, uh-
I- I believe, uh, and, uh, and I stand to be corrected, so if I don't say this right. Uh, they indicated that it could take, um, two or three years to get a portion of the site work ready and to build and sell all the houses could be as much as eight or ten years. I mean, they don't know how to project the sales, but it- So it could be, it'd be a multi-year project.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to come before us tonight? Anyone? Anyone? I'm gonna drop the hammer. She's eight, she's a nine. Anyway. John, uh, I believe this concludes our presentation. If you'll put our voting screen up for us, please. Okay, uh, council, I'll ask if there's any further questions for a call for a motion. Is any, any discussion?
Uh, let- let me just try to point something out. The gentleman mentioned tenants. Now, these, these are, uh, this property, these houses are gonna be sold. I mean, the people own this property, right? It's not rental-type stuff, right? So these people own property, so, I mean, they should wanna keep their property up and not be destroying other property near it. Cause they, they own this property, right? Okay. He said tenants and that, and he's throwing a fresh, these are property owners of these houses. Okay.
Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, bro, can I move, we approve the consistency statement approved by staff and the planning board as well as the rezoning required.
We have a motion, uh, uh, to approve the rezoning as being consistent. Do I have a second?
Say.
Second by Mr. Burks. Would all in favor, please indicate the same. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We thank everyone for their time and concern and hope that their, uh, concerns at least have some comfort that the, that the permitting process will, will effectively work and will have the desired outcome. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I am one.
It's been, Trevor?
Yes, sir.
Can you adjust the volume so the board is able to hear? Might as well do it all. I'm used to being on the scene when I turn.
Yes.
Yeah, this is dark.
In a minute. I've got a request around my way.
It's actually, uh, it's increasing.
Having on end two comes in.
Well, with the exception of-
Hard mail. I have a major, I'm gonna call a five-minute recess, yeah. Five-minute recess.
Absolutely. Yeah, yes.
Five-minute service.
Okay.
She has my cards. Okay.